Committee of the whole, Thursday, August 5th, 2021. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center Meeting Room space, once the capacity has been reached. Admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. The Committee of the Whole, scheduled for August 5th, 2021 at 5:00 PM, will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on Board Docs located on the school board's website. A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting, as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items online will need to click on the Agenda Item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted Public Comment hyperlink on the Agenda Item Details. Online comments are available for public review. And I now call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call a roll. I'm sorry, what? Oh, Jesus. All right, we will have, where is it on that? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Invocation by Board Member Mark Blue and Pledge of Allegi- oh, invocation by Board Member Jill Dyson and Pledge of Allegiance by School Board Member Mark Blue.
Dear Lord, as we come together today, help us to make the decisions that are best for our students, our teachers, and our community. Help us to come together in ways that provide for productive learning opportunities for our children. Thank you for all you do for us, and we continue to need your support as we work through challenges in our opening of school. Help us to make a productive transformation of the way we do things and safety protocols for all. And let us be mindful of varying opinions and work together in partnership for our children. Amen.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
District 9, President Chapman. District 4, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Present.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Godey.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
We have a quorum. Moving forward to Item C1, update from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. We're super excited with school being around the corner. First, I'd like to, I'd like to share a formal recommendation with the board. With the help in managing the spread of COVID-19 in our schools and in our community, before I detail my official recommendation, let me just share with you that my goal first and foremost is to protect our children and provide a safe learning environment for them. What has become very clear over the past couple of weeks is that the Delta variant has arrived and has taken foothold in certain communities. We also know that the children are being infected at a much greater rate than ever before. And we also don't have a safe and approved vaccine for children under the age of 12. But at the same time, we have been told by the state's leading doctors that the safest place for children is in school, so that they can continue their education, receive social emotional support, and receive the services they need. I, as Superintendent, believe it's important and our responsibility as adults to act in the best interests of our children. In response to the growing concerns related to the spread of the COVID-Delta variant and feeling the compelling need to ensure the safety and welfare of students, families, and staff, I'll be sending a memo to the board today to make the following recommendation. I'd like to make a formal recommendation to adopt policy authorizing the Superintendent to mandate all East Baton Rouge Parish school system employees to show proof of vaccination status or submit to weekly testing for all those who cannot show proof of vaccination status against the COVID-19 virus. I further recommend that, that the board, allow me to adopt policy that require employees with religious or legal recognized exemptions to be recognized and submit to periodic testing. And finally, I'm recommending that the board authorize the Superintendent to implement a system to collect vaccination information on all employees to plan for the safety of students and employees in our system. At this time, I'm going to ask our Chief of Student Support and Services, Ms. Stacy Dupree, to join us to share some more details on the guidance we released earlier this week around our safe reopening plan for this school year. Ms. Dupree? Ms. Dupree will be with Erin Antirza, who is a part of the student support team.
So I want to thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. I have a wonderful team of people, but I asked two of the ladies who work with me to help present this information because this is something that we've been dealing with on a day-to-day basis for the last year and a half, like everybody else. And they work closely with me, so they understand a lot of the work that we do. So, we're calling this "A Day in the Life of a Student." What happens with the student every day when they come to school? What is their day going to look like? The first question a parent always asks is, "Should my child go to school if they're ill?" The question is, "No." The answer is, "No." Contact your child's school so that they can offer assistance when your child is ill. Students, teachers, and staff should stay home when there are any signs of infection or illness. Individuals who have a fever greater than or equal to 104 degrees or other signs of illness will not be admitted to school. What happens on the bus? Because that's always a question. All pre-K through 12th grade students must, must wear a mask on the bus. That's all students, pre-K through 12. Students will sit in assigned seats according to their seating chart, and we did that last year, and we've improved our protocols on that. We will continue to have seating charts. Windows will be kept open for additional ventilation, of course, only if possible and safe. We want to make sure our students are safe. Bus operators will clean and sanitize the bus after each route, and buses will operate at full capacity. Of course, parents always have the option to bring their children to school. So now I'm going to ask Ms. Bradford to come up and present a few slides, starting with, "What Happens When Your Child Gets to School?"
Okay, so, we're going to talk about what happens when your child arrives at school. So K through 12 students and adults, we're all, wear a mask. Students in grades K through 12 are required to wear a mask. Students ages 2 through 4 may wear a mask if tolerated. Disposable masks will be available at the school site. We will continue to take temperature checks, as we've been doing before, upon arrival at school. Students will be provided with hand sanitizer as they enter and exit any room throughout the school. And schools will limit entry and exit points to allow students to travel in a single file line in a single direction to enable physical distancing. So now we'll talk about what happens in the classroom. Students will be given hand sanitizer upon entry and exit of the classroom. Desks will be sanitized between each class period. Students will be seated three feet apart, but in middle and high school, they're going to be facing the same direction. And adults in all classrooms will maintain six feet of distance between themselves and their students. Any shared material will be sanitized between use of those materials. Hand washing will be scheduled every two hours. If anyone shows signs of sickness, they will be escorted to the school's isolation room. Students with disabilities will receive their special education and related services in the least restrictive environment, as outlined by their IEP. And elementary students will remain in their cohort groups as much as possible throughout the day. So how would my child transition to new places in the building? So going from one place to another throughout the building. The school will have directional markers throughout the building to facilitate a one-way flow of traffic. Students will walk in a single file line while maintaining appropriate physical distancing. Masks will be worn by all, during all transitions, and water fountains will be closed. So bottled water filling stations will be available throughout our campuses. Restrooms will be cleaned and sanitized at least twice during the day. Where and how will my child eat? So, classrooms will be utilized for eating in place. If the cafeteria is used, students will be grouped and eat, and they will eat at staggered times. The group sizes will be limited to meet the six feet apart physical distancing requirement, and we are allowing our students to bring food from home. Students will also travel in a single file, single file spaced line to enter and exit the cafeteria, as well as in serving, disposal, and exit lines. Now we have tears of grace to continue our presentation.
So a number one question is, "Will my child be allowed to participate in PE and recess?" The answer is yes. Recession or PE classes in shared spaces will require physical distance guidelines to be followed. If groups are outdoors, a physical barrier is not required, but each group will remain separate. PE equipment will be sanitized between groups and after each use. A daily cleaning checklist of all surfaces and playground equipment commonly touched by children will be utilized to ensure all surfaces are sanitized after use. Will my child be able to participate in athletics? Athletic activities are to comply with the recommendations put forth in the LHSAA's guidance for opening up high school athletics and activities. It is recommended that students participating in athletics are vaccinated, are participating in a weekly testing regiment. Athletic equipment is cleaned after each use, and all attendees of athletics events will be required to wear masks. So, what will happen during dismissal? Students will exit the classroom in a single file line. Students will exit the building using the directional markers on the floor to maintain one-way flow of traffic. Students and adults will maintain separation measures upon dismissal. And students will board the bus and sit in their assigned seats or follow their school's carpool guidelines. Will my child's school have after care or an after-school program? Many parents are interested in this question. Yes, all after-school programs will adhere to the same safety requirements followed during the school day. Masks must be worn, physical distancing must be maintained, and equipment materials must be cleaned between groups. Schools will maintain static groups when possible and implement physical distancing requirements for groups that change composition. So what happens after my child leaves for the day? In all of our schools and facilities, all of our classrooms and restrooms will be cleaned and sanitized with an antiviral cleaner and disinfectant approved by the EPA.
Different heights. So, we know what happens. And I like to call them Oliver and Olivia, because they're just so cute, the students in our drawings. What happens if someone gets sick at school? How do we handle that? So we have an isolation protocol. So if the student, my child, gets sick at school, the ill student will be escorted to the isolation room. The staff member will notify the principal and the school nurse about the ill student. The student's guardian or parent will be contacted to pick the student up within one hour. The school nurse will provide initial and follow-up guidance. So they give initial guidance, and they call and check on the student to see how they're doing. The student, the ill student's parent or guardian will complete a return to symptoms letter to school guidance. This is a letter that, once they've gone past their 10 days and they met the criteria, they bring it back, and the nurse goes through it and certifies that they've met the criteria. So they do like a backup check to make sure they're healthy to come back. The custodial staff will clean the school's isolation room as soon as the student exits, because we need to make sure it's cleaned each time there's a student in the isolation room. And just to remind you and let you know, the school nurses and anyone who's in the isolation room, who's not the student who's ill, they are wearing proper PPE, and they have been trained on the correct use of PPE in the isolation room. So what is a close contact? My child's in a classroom, and there are close contact of a student who's positive or a teacher who's positive for COVID. What is a close contact? We have to make sure people understand. So, a person who is within six feet of a confirmed positive case for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period is a close contact. LDH, after doing research, has also gave us an exception. This exception is only for students and only in the classroom. They have to meet the following guidelines to be an exception to the close contact rule of six feet, less than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. And this rule is, if both the case and the close contact each consistently are wearing their mask over their nose and their mouth, and they're three feet or further apart, the close contact does not have to self-quarantine. So that is from LDH, and we're going to follow that guidance. It's also been provided by LDOE. So what happens if my child is determined to be a close contact and they have to self-quarantine? That's a question we get a lot. In EBR, we have a self-isolation room, but we have a self-quarantine room also. We, when we first started this, I worked with the nurses, and we said it really doesn't make sense to use the isolation room to quarantine students, because you want to keep the student with the symptoms separated from the students who are close contacts. So we implemented a self-quarantine room. So if a student is a close contact, we bring them to the self-quarantine room. We contact the parent of the close contact. We give them a parental letter with instructions as to what they have to do and how do they meet the criteria to come back to school. At pre-K sites, because the students are not required to wear masks, both the teachers and the staff in the pre-K classroom have to self-quarantine for 14 days. However, if they're vaccinated, they do not have to self-quarantine. They have addition, they have other guidance. In the K through 12 schools, because everyone, adults and children, will be wearing a mask, they will do the self, the 10-day self-quarantine. So they will stay out 10 days. They can return. They have to wear their mask at all times, social distance, physical distancing, following all guidelines of COVID, and monitor their symptoms for four more days. And this is for non-vaccinated individuals. So I'm a parent, and I'm worried. How do I know if there's a case of COVID at my child's school? Is someone going to tell me? So I'm going to review the process that we used last year, and we'll continue to use this year. So, at a school or a, or a district site, I have a confirmed case of COVID. As an administrator, I look at who are my close contacts? In the classroom, on the bus, on a football team? We go through all the protocols in every single area. So if they're not a close contact, all the students on that bus, all the students in the classroom, who are in the same area as the student who's positive, will receive a non-close contact letter. That letter provides information of what symptoms to look for, additional guidance, and the health centers and schools' main office if they need to talk to a nurse. If they are a close contact, that's on 3A, we contact the parents immediately. We ask them to come in. When they come in, the nurses or medical assistants provide them with a letter and guidance on what to do as a close contact. That letter includes symptoms, what to look for, when can they come back, it has the dates in there. They also get a COVID resource guide, which lists some places where they can go get tested, which is at our health clinics with no charge. So, that takes care of the kids on the bus, in the school, on the football team. What about everybody else? Every day, there is a staff or a student who is positive for COVID, communication is sent to the parents and to all employees on campus. For the students, they can send out, it depends on the school. We've given, we've given the principals a little flexibility in that. As long as everybody receives it, they can send out a remind. Some schools have the Remind app. Some of them have their own app for the school. Some of them send it out in J-Campus. But to be honest, most of the principals, last year, sent it out in two forms of communication, because they wanted to make sure the parents knew. For the staff, they send out an email. And essentially, the two communications say, "We've had a case on campus, we've done our close contacts, we're just letting you know, because we want the parents to know that there's been a case on campus." So what do I do if my child is a close contact of someone outside of school, or they have COVID-19? They didn't have symptoms at school, you found out over the weekend, you went somewhere, and a couple of days later, you found out someone that you're around had COVID and you're a close contact. It's like any other illness. Contact your child's school for assistance. The same self-quarantine and self-isolation guidance applies, and the nurses will work with that parent to help them make sure they have the dates correct. Now this is a question that's been coming up. Does my child have to enroll in the virtual school if they have to isolate or quarantine? That is a real, that question's come up a lot. The answer is, "No." Like any other situation, when a student is at home due to an illness, the parent and or guardian will contact the school to make arrangements to get the students missed work. The student will continue to be enrolled at the same school during the 10 to 14 days of isolation and or self-quarantine. So, that's if a student's sick or has to self-quarantine. It's treated like any other illness. The virtual school is for students whose parents have selected to opt for virtual instruction. And those parents who've selected that, in the elementary and middle schools, they commit to at least a nine-week enrollment. So that's a grading period. At the high school, they commit to a semester enrollment. So, this is two different things. When a kid has to isolate or self-quarantine, just like in the past when there's an illness, because we've had measles, we've had mumps, we've had rubella, it's a school system, and we have kids who have those diseases come around. We treat them like any other absence, and we provide the work for them. Another question we've had, how do we know if we close down a school? Are we closed down a classroom? So what factors determine if a class or school is temporarily closed because of COVID-19? So for a classroom closure, and I try to write this simply, because it gets a little complex when you read the stuff that comes from LDH. So, if you have two people in a classroom who test positive and this, within 14 days, and the second person is not one of the students or staff who were self-quarantining, then you close down the classroom. You isolate the class. So you quarantine the class. But that's only if you have two cases in the same class within 14 days, and the second case is not a student you sent home to self-quarantine. It works very similarly from class to class. It works the same on buses. It's the same process. So what about a school closure? So what about a school closure? When the numbers of staff in isolation or quarantine hinders the operation of in-person learning and there's a tipping point, it depends on the size of the school and the population because smaller schools can hit that tipping point earlier than larger schools. And that decision is not made in isolation. We contact the Office of Public Health, go through all the criteria, and then they make a recommendation to us and we bring it to leadership who then shares it and brings it to you. So how are we going to help support our parents? First thing tomorrow, we will be launching the COVID hotline. We have an email address, which is covidhotline@ebrschools.org. And we have a phone number, 225-397-2210. And a person will be answering the phone. We have a primary and a secondary, so we will have someone answering it during the day. If they have been instructed and trained and if there's a question they don't know, they know where to go to get the answer. All calls and all communication will be returned because it's very important that our parents feel safe and our students feel safe. And I'd like to thank my team, Ms. Brazier and Ms. Bradford for their help. I couldn't have done this without them. And I want to thank all of you and all my colleagues that I work with because you've been a big support through this process. Dr. Narcisse, I'm done.
Thank you. Sorry for the long update, but I also have for the board an update on facilities cleaning. If I can get the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Frank Chester, and our Chief of Support for Operations, Mr. John McCann, to please come up. I know this update's a little long, but just wanted to make sure that we provide the information that families were requesting. Mr. Chester?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, and other members of the board. We have obviously been spending a fair amount of time trying to ensure that we have done everything humanly possible for when our kids return. And you just heard Ms. Stacey Dupree outline the protocols, the processes that will be followed. You also noticed that a number of those things entail cleaning because cleaning, and when you think about it, the things that we have control over. And we want to make sure that those things are being effectively managed on a day-to-day basis. We have identified contacts for the opening of our schools. We've got a key person that will be focused on this whole area of dealing with the facilities and what's required on those facilities and managing those facilities on a daily basis. And with that, I'd like to bring up Mr. John McCann, who will kind of go through what those protocols are, as well as a couple of other areas that we are also addressed in terms of dealing with the air quality of the various schools and facilities that
President Tatman, Vice President Collins, members of the board, Dr. Narcisse, we come to you today in this perilous time, which has been exacerbated by the Delta variant, to achieve our goal as a system to provide a safe environment for our teachers and students. This presentation details the daily cleaning and sanitizing of our schools, what type of solutions are used, hospital-grade disinfectants. They deliver effective cleaning and biocidal action. There's a 10-minute general disinfection time. What types of sanitizing solutions? Oxavir wipes. These Oxavir wipes have to be handled with gloves because they're very, very effective. They're registered, one-step grade disinfected. They kill SARS, COVID-19 viruses in one minute. What is the frequency of disinfecting? High-touch surfaces are cleaned and sanitized twice a day. High-touch surfaces such as doorknobs, push plates, light switches, room controls, elevator buttons, vending machines, and drinking fountains. As noted earlier, common drinking fountains will be closed again this year. We have bottle fill adapters. We're asking students to bring water from home. And we are, as you'll see later, providing ample supplies of bottled water. What's the frequency of disinfecting cleaning? Increased night cleaning in pre-K and kindergarten areas, especially in the floors with the youngsters who get on the floor a lot. They have carpet reading areas and common groups. Daily frequency, instead of once weekly, the team will clean floors with vacuums. We also have, that we implemented last year, the electrostatic misters, which are a great aid in these large areas in cleaning pre-K, preschool, and playground equipment. Pre-K and kindergarten areas use the electrostatic sprayer and bioesque solution and pay special attention to learning tools, toys, and manipulatives to make sure they are disinfected. Daily, weekly, and cleaning procedure for restrooms, they are cleaned and sanitized twice daily. All trash is emptied. The normal cleaning takes place plus additional sanitizing. This slide details for you the basic supplies that each school will receive. And that procedure is in place as we speak. We're delivering supplies to the schools. We'll be throughout the weekend. The school system, along with our partners at Aramark, is supporting the Back to School Bash with PPE. We've additionally added 5,000 disposable youth-sized masks, along with the adult disposables we've provided. The isolation rooms, as you'll see on this checklist, as Ms. Dupree referred to earlier, they have specialized equipment with aprons for the nurses, gloves, and additional protections for those isolation rooms and the other room that Ms. Dupree referred to. In regards to air quality enhancements, the district has purchased MERV-13 high-density commercial-grade air filters installed in every school. They are presently installed in the schools. They filter out smaller particulates. They're very dense. They have to be changed quarterly. We've already initiated a process to purchase those for the next quarter because we'll get somewhat of a price break on the advanced order. And in addition to that, we have looked and are still looking at other options with the engineers and consulting with Fusion Architects and our partners at Aramark to look at things such as ultraviolet light, ionization machines. And we've even talked about putting fans in modular buildings because those buildings are not connected to the main AC system. So we're looking at those options and we have to find things that are compatible with our current HVAC systems. That concludes that presentation. If there are any questions?
We have one more presentation, then we'll take questions out of it. Thank you, Mr. McCann, Mr. Chester. If I can get the Chief of Schools, Dr. Sharon Williams, to come up to talk
Thank you.
about the reopening of schools and also virtual schools for our audience and the board. Just wanted to make sure we are answering questions that we've been receiving since our announcement. Dr. Williams?
Good evening, Board President Tatman, Board members, Dr. Narcisse. I'm Sharon Williams, your Chief of Schools. Just with a quick update regarding school opening and a few details around our EBR So right previous to Superintendent Narcisse's press conference, we had a webinar with our school leaders. And the question I started our conversation out with was, "What have you learned about leading through a crisis?" I thought it was important for us to think about this question as they're going into a new school year. Most of the responses had to do with our four Cs. Many of the principals responded that it was important to them and they learned that they must communicate consistently with clarity around school opening and our procedures. They talked about transparency and flexibility. They talked about reaching out to parents and speaking in layman's terms. They especially talked about being flexible. And I think that is a key for our leaders, a key learning for our leaders last year as they were working through the perils of a global pandemic. So this year, we wanted to be strategic about our opening of schools, just as we are every year. We wanted to make sure that our one-to-one support for school leaders was happening day to day. Our executive directors for school leadership have been in constant contact with each of our school leaders and are making site visits daily to each of the schools to work with them on opening of schools. We've collaborated with each of our departments and divisions regarding technology, facilities and operations, academics, and human resources. I talk to Mr. McCann just about three or four times a day, and they've been very responsive to our school's needs. I also want to share that we have been doing just-in-time professional development. Things are very fluid right now. And as we learn more, we want to make sure that our school leaders are up to date on the most important information to get schools started off right. So what are our plans for the first weeks of school? We think it's very important for all boots to be on the ground during the first weeks of school. So each of our central office employees will have a role in supporting schools those first weeks of school. And that spans from the opening day, August 11th, through the 20th. The schools will receive the support that they need. We asked them specifically, "What times of day do you need support at your school? What types of support do you need?" So we allow principals to have voice and choice in how they are supported during those first weeks of school. And central office leaders have signed up for schools so that there are extra hands in order to help with the opening of school. The cabinet as a whole will meet daily during that time period, August 11th through the 20th or further if needed, to debrief how our schools are operating those first weeks of school. Those meetings will be based on data. That data will be pulled up from the school level and also from the executive directors for school leadership, who will be in schools each day during those first couple of weeks. The purpose of those meetings is to get better and better each day as we're learning about how schools are operating those first weeks of school. So just a quick update on the EBR Virtual Academy. We do have a location for the Virtual Academy, a location for our teachers and staff. And that is at the 802 Mayflower Street location. Right now, we are undergoing some improvements to that location to make sure that our virtual teachers have a space that's conducive to teaching and learning in a virtual world. Again, this is just a brief overview of the academy. We are serving students in grades prepaid through 12th grade. We have certified teachers and flexible scheduling. We are using the same Tier One curriculum materials and the curriculum that the district uses for all of our students. And all of the technology needed for virtual learning experience is being provided to our students. Right now, the numbers are 614 families have expressed an interest by reserving a seat over this summer. We had a deadline, and at that deadline point, we had 614 families that were interested. As of today, 300-plus families have begun the registration process by submitting an application. The Mayflower Street location is very busy. Ms. Johnson, who is helping to support the principal, Dr. Dixon, reported that there were approximately 75 to 100 families on location today picking up applications or dropping off information. And about right now, 256 families have completed the entire registration process. So we do want to address our magnet families and magnet students. We do have an option for students to hold their seat if their family has decided that they want a virtual learning experience this year. So the first step is to apply. We have a standard EBR Virtual Academy application. The processing takes place with the staff on Mayflower. Parents will receive a notification. They must visit their magnet school to sign a magnet hold sent letter. We've worked very closely with Ms. Porter and her office regarding that process. The third step is for those students to enroll. The parent must drop the student from the magnet school and enroll in the EBR Virtual Academy. At that point, that magnet seat hold letter is what holds that seat for the family so that when they decide to return to the magnet school at the semester break, they have their seat held. The magnet status timeline is that we'd like for all families to enroll or at least submit the application by August 13th at the very latest. We understand that this is a very fluid situation. So if that date comes and we see that there is still a need, we will be flexible. And we want to ensure that students are in a stable location, so at least a semester commitment in order to hold that magnet seat for them so that when families are ready to return, they can return to their seat. I'd like to invite my colleague, Dr. Robinson, to come up and just say a few words about the curriculum so that we can have some clarity around what our curriculum is and how that is standardized, both in the virtual environment and the brick-and-mortar schools.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So the question has been coming up about the curriculum for the virtual school. And the curriculum is going to remain the same. Whatever students are getting in their regular schools, they will get that in the virtual school as well. And what I have listed are the curriculums for, are these resources for each of those content areas? For ELA, Wit and Wisdom, My Perspectives, EL, and also guidebooks, Eureka Math for math and Springboard. We have high schools that are, only three of them magnets, that are using Springboard for math. Social studies, we're using the state standards, but we're also using Studies Weekly, K5, and DBQ for our middle schools and high schools. And then science, we're using Amplify.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you.
And just a few more things in the update. I just wanted to make the board and the public aware, we have an FAQ for questions if anyone has concerning. I know we provide a lot of information, so we do have an FAQ sheet for you there. And finally, just a few more announcements in my update. We will have our Back to School Bash. This is just a final reminder. We will be doing, still at the Rivercane Center, but we will be at 50% capacity with distancing involved. That will be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Just a reminder that all attendees are required to wear masks and social distance. We'll be opening at a reduced capacity in sanitizing stations there. We also have the Stuff the Bus this year, which was a success again. We appreciate the support of the community. We were able to raise $21,000 in donation of school supplies and cash donations. Thank you to our board members for your support throughout the day, our staff, our media partner, WBRC, and our generous community partners. We also had this week professional development. This week was hosted a system-wide diversified professional development for educators where literacy and math coaches, instructional specialists, and parent engagement specialists were able to receive support as they get ready for the opening of schools next week. We're dedicated to employee development as a cornerstone. We're dedicated to employee development as a cornerstone of the strategic plan moving forward. And we're excited to have been able to offer this opportunity to our educational professionals. I also want to show that we have completed and we're getting ready our Student Handbook, which is online, but we're also making hard copies of that. It's the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook. It has been finalized and can be found online. We've also begun to print copies for all our students, and you can expect to have those in time for the start of the school year next year. Please note that this includes the revised guidance around uniform pants. I know there was some confusion on there, but we have spoken to principals to make sure there is clarity on that. We've also had Glen Oaks Orientation last week. Last week, we were able to welcome our first cohort of ninth graders who will begin the Pathways to Bright Futures program at Glen Oaks Magnet High School. Next week, nearly 90 students will embark on the journey towards earning both a high school diploma and associate's degree. The other component is, last, I have a score release update. The Louisiana Department of Education released the LEAP 2025 scores from this year testing window. Our teams continue to run that data, and we'll present that at the August full board meeting. I know that was very long, but Madam Vice President, that is my update.
Okay, thank you so much, Board Member Darius Lannis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. And thank you, Mr. Superintendent, staff and team, for your amazing presentation about, around reopening schools and what those protocols are going to look like. However, I know that myself along with all the rest of my fellow colleagues and board members have been receiving a plethora of different emails concerning the reopening of schools. So tonight, I'd like to take some time out to offer up a motion, and I'd like to offer a motion for consideration of a request to suspend the rules of procedure and add an item to the meeting agenda entitled "Consideration and Discussion of COVID-19 Procedures in School Reopening." And this is merely just for discussion. So if there's anyone in the public that may have any additional concerns or questions that they may not have seen throughout the presentation, they can take this time out now to ask those questions before we move forward our current agenda. But again, I just wanted to offer that, and hopefully, we can have some discussion about it if any of our board members want to talk about it also.
Okay, so you offered a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Evelyn Ware Jackson? Okay, Board Member Ware Jackson seconds that motion. And so then, come into the board for questions. I'm trying to keep it in order for, we had some things in the queue. So after Board Member Jill Dyson's name, if people have questions or comments in regard to the motion, just raise your hand.
I think, just as a point of order, I think we're going to have to go around and make sure there's no objection by any board member because it has to be by unanimous consent for, yeah, for a non-agenda item to be added to the agenda.
Okay, don't we still have to have, come to the board, then to the public on whether it's added or no? Just give me clarity on procedure.
Yeah, the motion to add an agenda item actually requires the unanimous vote of all board members present, okay? And so I believe Mr. Goode is correct, probably to make sure that we have a unanimous agreement to add the item. Now, a motion and a second have been made. I know we have a parliamentarian sitting next to you who can probably give us a little direction. The board, the rules of procedure aren't clear about whether public comment or comment on the motion happens before or after we check with objections from board members. So, Mr. Goode, thank you for that. So, Mr. Tappman, I would ask you to give us a little direction on that as parliamentarian.
Thank you.
I wish Connie was here. No, I'm just kidding. I believe that if it, it has to be an affirmative unanimous vote. I think it's the same process. So I think we have to take questions from the board. His motion that was seconded, we're going to deal with that before you deal with any other questions. And then the audience will have an opportunity to speak on the motion to add the agenda item.
Okay.
So you start with board comments, then go to the audience, and come back to the board as usual.
Okay, and so then I'll just look for hands for the sake of not messing up the queue that already existed. Did any board member have any comment before we go to the public for comment on the narrow item of whether or not this should be an agenda item? Yes, Board Member Dyson?
I believe that we have board members in the queue to discuss. This is a separate item. And we have board members in the queue to discuss and about this presentations that we've just heard. And I feel like we need to get those, stay on that subject while we're on it before we introduce a new item.
The only issue is that we now have a motion on the floor, and so we just, we'll just come back to it.
I'd like to raise a point of order.
Okay.
I'd like us to rethink the advice just given because unless there has unanimous consent, there is no item on the floor for the public to discuss. So if we have, we do not have unanimous consent to add the item, there is nothing to discuss with the public. At least, that's my reading of Robert's Rules of Order. The agenda item doesn't exist if there's an objection. I'm not going to object, but I'm just trying to stay with Robert's Rules of Order.
I don't disagree with you. I mean, I guess the point is, is back to the parliamentary part of it, that if, you're right, if somebody objects. But the whole purpose of questions and comments from the audience should be limited to whether or not we add the agenda item as opposed to the subject matter surrounding the agenda item.
But there is no item unless if a-
Which he made a motion to add it, and it's a-
That's, that's a motion that stands only if no one objects. If any of us object, the motion's gone.
So I'm sorry, does it say an affirmative vote of the board, a unanimous affirmative vote of the board? Or does it say without objection?
It says unanimous vote of the board.
Vote of the board, yes. Look, I'm not going to fight it one way or the other, but if we're-
I'm not going to object, but I'm just trying to make sure as we set precedent because that could be a way to get public discussion on an item not on the agenda that we don't, that we as a board decide not to even put on the agenda. So I'm thinking more about precedent than this particular item.
I don't know that it would be something you would call precedent, but I do think and agree that the comment should definitely be restricted to whether or not we should add an item to discuss, not discussion of the content that we would like. I'm going to do my best, but, I mean, any other board comment?
Just a point of order. I want to hear the motion again. I wasn't sure, clear what it was.
Motion was for consideration of a request to suspend the rules of procedure and add an item to the meeting agenda entitled "Consideration and Discussion of COVID-19 Procedures in School Reopening."
Any other board comments specific to adding an item on the agenda? Yes, ma'am, Board Member Dyson?
I'm just a little bit concerned about the, we've introduced and made a motion and a second on an item during the middle of another item. And I believe that if we're adding an item, it should be added to the end of the advertised agenda.
Okay, so would that-
Ms. Dyson is correct about that. Normally, when the motion is made, if it's approved by the board, the item is added to the end of the agenda. That's been the traditional practice.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board comment? Seeing none, any public comments specifically about adding an item to discuss on the agenda? Not the discussion, but adding an item to discuss, to vote on discussing. I mean, to discuss, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me? Oh, there we go. Good evening. Jennifer Harding, District Five. Thank you so much, Mr. Lannis, for bringing the motion. I really hope, it seems like it's not that hard to decide whether or not you want to hear from your constituents and the parents of the children that go to your school, but it seems to be difficult for some of you in this moment to want to do that. So I just really urge you to do the right thing, pass this motion, and hear some questions, comments, and concerns from the people you are elected and appointed to represent. Thank you.
Good evening. Frankie Robertson, the Amanda Group. I'm in Jill Dyson's district. I also am here as a concerned parent, concerned citizen, asking you to please hear the voices of the parents who's, who are the parents of the children that you are asking us to totally 100% entrust their lives, safety, and well-being to you. And the fact that we have to go through the last 10 minutes to hear a discussion on parliamentary procedure and whether or not to accept the motion and have parents have an opportunity to speak is very concerning. After hearing a very complex procedural manual outlined, and I'm wondering if we have to take this much time to discuss adding something to the agenda, where is my confidence that this complex measures and series of things that are outlined in this booklet will be carried out satisfactorily to keep our children and the community safe? Thank you.
Hello, Fairleigh Jackson, District Five. I'd like to thank many of you for the conversations we've had over the past few days. And as far as adding this agenda item goes, I'd like to really just look at you all and ask you to look at your colleagues and give each other the respect to talk about this amongst yourselves and also give us the respect to comment and support you and how you feel about this reopening plan. It does not seem that the board has had much input on this reopening plan, but as the state of things go, it will all be your legacy about what happens over the next several weeks, several months. And I think you also had a board member make an attempt to add this to your agenda yesterday. And it could have happened, but it didn't happen because of circumstances that were personal circumstances, time issues. So give each other, give your fellow board members the respect of their desire to talk about this. That is why I think this agenda item should be added for you all to take the chance to hear from each other and then hopefully hear from us. Thank you all so much for your service.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Harmon. I'm a constituent in District Six and also co-director of Step Up Louisiana. We organize parents throughout Baton Rouge. I'm just coming up here to encourage you to add this agenda item for discussion. This is a great opportunity for much discourse. There was a surge in COVID cases in the past week. So these are still unprecedented times that we're trying to mitigate through. So I just encourage you to use your body and your platform to have full discussion and full community input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Caleb Holmes. I'm the organizer with Step Up Louisiana. Just want to, don't want to belabor the point too much, but considering how much COVID has surged in the last few weeks and considering the safety of children and basically just the safety of EBR workers, that this is a consideration that does need to be taken up, that people have a right to have their opinions heard and that you as a body with the power to actually make changes need to have this discussion. And to reiterate the point that was earlier made when this was asked by many constituents to be added to the agenda, and it still didn't get there, it's just a little concerning considering that people have a lot of concerns. And once again, there's a deadly virus that is running around, and to kind of just scuffle it up under the rug is not something that we need to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other pub, public comment, back to the board. Seeing no other board comment, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. What does it say? Yeah? Yours is? Refresh maybe? The motion carries.
Thank you. And so then back to the question, the, the queue. Then I did have some questions about the presentation itself. But first, I'd also like to lift up that the superintendent has made a formal request of the board on the recommend, to give him some authority to make some decisions for the safety of staff and students as it relates to vaccines and masking and test, well, vaccines and testings. And so I would like to see that on the regular board meeting out of respect for his formal request. The questions that I have are, so I really am struggling with the whole idea of the three feet social distancing. I wouldn't struggle with it so much if there was not a surge, a current surge, and it also now absolutely affecting children at much higher rates, whereas prior to this moment, it almost appeared as children were immune. And so it just takes it up many, many notches. And so then this whole idea of the three feet apart of the CDC recommendation, I get how you can possibly assume that there's enough space in a classroom, plan and space out desks for three feet apart. But I'm struggling with, if buses are at full capacity, then does that allow for the three-foot recommended spacing? Same thing in hallways. Is it possible out on a middle school campus for there to be three feet constant, three feet distancing where students are going from class to class? I'm struggling with that. With regard to the buses, perhaps, I don't, I don't know. And maybe somebody will be able to respond to, you know, maybe I underestimate the width of the seats on the bus, right? Or how many children in a seat? So please clarify for me. But assuming that there is enough space when students are seated on the bus, then perhaps, and I'm just throwing this thought out here, and you may have already thought of this because you said assigned seating on the buses, does that mean that the first student on the bus goes all the way to the back? And then you grad, you fill the seats so that the last student sits at the front? That way, it's not a lot of back and forth traffic to give additional opportunities for exposure in that way, with students getting on and off the bus? My other, my next step, my next step. Was, okay, my next step. Okay, and the water bottles. I mean, yeah, the drinking water, I think is great. I think it's, you know, I appreciate that the water fountains will be shut down for safety and that the, for lack of the right term, the water- the water filling stations will be available on campuses. But can I get some clarity around with the water that the district will supply to the students? Like, if it's going to be a bunch of designy water bottles, would we, would it be more cost-effective and more, I mean, you know, environmentally friendly if we just order a bunch of? I mean, and it might help with school spirit or what have you. Some EBR reusable water bottles that they can use at the refill station versus cases and cases of plastic disposable bottles? If I'm misunderstanding, just let me know if that's a possibility and, or if you've researched that that is not cost-effective, et cetera, just let me know. The cleaning, the sanitation supplies, there were lots of rumblings, whether true or false, there were lots of rumblings that teachers and school sites were not able to get those items that were said to have been at their disposal when needed. And so can we, so that we don't have to, so it don't have to be a matter of the street committee saying this, that, and the other third, can we put some kind of mechanism in place that if a, a school site or is not able to get the supplies that they need directly to the school system, not through Aramark, because that's asking the fox to watch the hen house, right? I mean, I mean, that's asking for them to, and I'm not saying that they absolutely will lie, but if, if there is concern that teachers and school sites are not getting what they need, you know, ask the person who already was supposed to give it to them. So is it possible, Superintendent, that we put some mechanism in place that school sites, teachers, what have you can say, "Hey, district office, we were told that we will have A, B, C, X, Y, Z items, but I'm not able to get my hands on it." And then, last but not least, I need clarity around in the facility study. We did some talking about the HVAC systems. I'm not, this is not something that I'm very clear on at all. I just remember tangentially learning about air quality during a pandemic, HVAC systems, et cetera. I appreciate that Mr. McCain mentioned about the air filters, but then I need some better understanding of whether or not, in spite of the air filters, if the HVAC systems are not what they need to be, then what will we do in that regard? And that's it for me. Thank you. And then Superintendent, how did you want to handle that? You want to have put something together and email board members on these questions? Or you want to let folks respond as, or what have you?
Yes, our plan, Vice President Collins, was just to collect the questions of the board. And then we'll send back a letter to the board with all of the recommendations.
Okay. So then I'll move forward to Board Member Mike Goday.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Ms. Dupree, this is a question for you. I strongly support all of the items that you've put up here, and I also am very glad to see that you've gotten a hotline set up. One of the issues that we faced last time, and Ms. Vice President Collins sort of alluded to it, was a lot of questions about supplies and this, that, and the other. And of course, we all know everything you read on the Internet's correct. And so, you know, we get to those issues. But I'm concerned about the manning of the hotline. I think it would be very appropriate if by some way that hotline could be manned till, say, 7:00 at night. Because if you just do it during the office hours, our teachers are working in the office hours, and they may not have a chance to get to it. If you have a mother that comes home, or a father that comes home after work, and their child tells them, "This is what happened at school today, and it's already 6:00," and it could be days before that can get back through the system. And by that time, the Internet will have exploded about, "I can't believe this is going on," when, when little Billy just had the wrong image of what actually happened. So, you know, at least in the first couple of weeks, I think we ought to err greatly on the side of over-accessibility and over-communication as we go through this. So I would strongly suggest that you think about having a person on that hotline till, say, 7:00 at night, so they could get a response and, and get something back quickly.
I think we should be able to do that. We have two people who will be providing assistance, and I'll work with the superintendent and with these individuals to set up a flexible schedule so that we can have coverage.
Okay. I just think that would be a good way to nip a lot of issues in the bud. Not, not that people aren't bringing up real issues, because if it's an issue in their mind, it's a real issue. They just might have incorrect information, or it's something we need to address and get addressed quickly. And so having that better means of communication would allow us also to address it very quickly. Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you. Board Member Dyson.
Yes, thank you. So, a couple of things. One is that with the PowerPoint presentation that Ms. Dupree and her team used, is, can we get that electronically sent to each one of us and posted onto our website? And the same for Mr. McCain's presentation? And the same for Dr. Williams' presentation? So that would be on the website and electronically shared with us?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay. And then, so in the portion of Ms. Dupree's presentation, I wanted to ask about parochial bus routes and masks being required or not on the parochial routes. And I didn't know if anyone had thought of that yet.
Ms. Dupree?
So I will never claim expertise outside my area, but I will give this with the information I know. The requirement to wear a mask on the bus is a presidential mandate. It is not a local or state mandate. So I have to be careful with that. I'll defer to Mr. Shamblin on how to address that. But that's my understanding, that it's, it's a federal from the president.
So I think we do need clear guidance, and I think we need to add this to our FAQs because I know that we have a very large population, and I know in some, my district for one, a lot of my constituents do attend parochial schools. And I think there's a few maybe private schools that use our transportation. But, and then, I don't know, do we have any current charter schools using our? Are type 1 charters going to be following the same guidelines that we do on transportation and in schools?
Yeah, I'll speak to the type 1 charters. Type 1 charter schools are authorized by the board. If they utilize our transportation, then they would have to comply with any mandates or guidelines that apply to the use of that transportation. So in short, it would apply to them. I will get further guidance on the question regarding parochial and private schools. I suspect I know the answer, but I'd rather make sure before I provide that with the board.
Okay. So we're going to have that given to us in an email, a follow-up email?
Follow-up email by tomorrow morning.
And listed on the website with the FAQ?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. My next question is, in general, we typically must always be very mindful of the heat and the, the water being needed on buses. We usually have ice chests with water bottles, I believe, when we're experiencing such extreme heat. And I was wondering how we're going to handle that and the disposal of these water bottles as well? And I'm sorry, these things just came to me as I was listening to all of this, and I just feel like, and I hate to put anybody on the spot, but I think we need to get any kind of questions like this answered and make sure we've got those protocols in place for all of these kind of areas where it may have slipped our minds up until now. So is that also going to have to come through? I don't know who handles that, the water bottles on the buses and the disposal of the bottles with COVID.
So water bottles, Mr. Chester and Mr. McCain, if you might come up to, for that question?
And again, I apologize for putting anyone on the spot. I just think that the more transparency and accuracy of our information and we can try to be proactive about these questions that may come up or?
You know, and I, let me just say, I appreciate that. I think that the, the answer is we need to look at the, how we distribute, first of all, the, the water bottles, if we have them on the bus. I think that in terms of disposal, that is part of our normal protocol as to how we clean and sanitize the buses following the riders dropping off of the students. So it would be part of that process that we already have in place.
So if we're asking students to leave them at their seat, then I think that we just need to make sure that they know that they're leaving this on their seat, not as a general rule, because we always pick up after ourselves, but in this case of COVID. And I think that needs to be clear to our students who need to know that we do pick up after ourselves, so.
Absolutely. They'd agree with you 100%.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. My next question is regarding shields. And I've been asked about, and I've seen some things, questions floating around on social media about shields. And I only, I think in the press conference, I, it seemed like to me that we were only speaking to the ESS population and not the general population with a parent who, or a teacher who would prefer the use of a shield, and they might consider in person with a shield, but wouldn't with a mask. And I understand that there's a way, there's something out there with fabric that can go from the shield to the neck to make it more like a mask as far as transmission of the virus. And I just wanted to see where we are because I know that we've got people waiting for this answer on their students, and can they use shields? And if so, what exactly do they need to purchase for that?
Yeah, Ms. Dupree, can you come back up and just provide the board with the guidelines for shields, please?
So the information that is provided from the CDC and LDH is that all individuals who can physically wear a mask should wear a mask because that is the most protective measure that we take. There are some deviations from that for students or faculty who have medical conditions that do not allow them to wear a mask, or they're too young, two, you know, two-year-olds and below, to wear a mask. With those, LDH provided an alternate guidance that if you have a physical condition, a medical condition, you could wear a shield with a cloth attached to the bottom that's tucked in. It's not as effective as a mask, but it's much more effective than just wearing a shield where the air comes out or comes up above it. So that comes from guidance from LDH. And I checked with them today just to verify that that is the correct information they provided us. So it's not a preference, it's a physical condition.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the parent or the teacher or staff member would need to provide a doctor's letter that says that due to this medical condition, they need to be excluded and allowed to have a shield with a fabric to the neck? Is that correct?
So I'm going to address the students because I am not at HR. They have different processes. But with students, any medical condition where they need some type of accommodation or medication, we require a doctor's note. And we've had many students last year who had respiratory issues, and we have the doctor's notes. They filled them out. The nurses verified and checked, and the students were allowed to wear the shield with the cloth attached tucked into their shirt.
So are those letters that were in place last year going to carry over for this year? Because it's the same child and the same medical condition?
Each year, when you start school, you have to have new letters for medical conditions, be it asthma, diabetes. We are required to have an update on their medical condition.
Okay. So, okay. So we're talking about the students with you, and are we going to add this particular discussion onto the FAQ, which will be on the website?
Yes, ma'am. And I will check with HR so we can address.
Is HR here?
Ms. Donaldson?
Thank you. And, and Ms. Dupree, thank you for all of your work on this.
Good, good evening. President Tatman, Vice President Collins, and the board members. The Office of Human Resources provides a accommodation for employees who cannot wear a mask. They would have to do the same process. There is a form that is available through our frontline system that they would complete, and they would actually have to provide a written document from their medical physician indicating that they are medically unable to wear the normal cloth mask. Yes, ma'am. And then we would have to review that information, and it has to be done annually.
Okay. So everything's the same when dealing with a student or an employee?
Yes, ma'am. It's just a different, we have an internal employee system that they're able to submit that request to us.
Okay. So can we get that also in our FAQs?
Yes, ma'am.
On the website?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So I was very pleased to, to understand that the homework and classwork will be sent home or sent to the student who is quarantined. But I wanted to, it specifically kind of says that 10 to 14 days of isolation or quarantine. And I'm wondering if they're actually diagnosed and they're not well enough to re-enter as, you know, into their class that quickly? Maybe they have a case that takes a few weeks longer, a few days, a few weeks? Are we just going to continue that process of making sure that they have their work from the school site?
So it depends on the length of time because, yes, some students take longer to get over COVID. So they have some, they have, we have some viable options when we get to that point. They could qualify for homebound services where they could get provided services through that way, just like a child who may have surgery or have had a baby and has to have services at home. The other option is their parents can look into, perhaps we do need to drop them from their home school and enroll them in the virtual school.
But that won't be required?
No, ma'am. So there are different options. So when, there are any medical conditions that go on for a long period of time, we always work with the homebound office to help provide support.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And that'll go on the FAQs as well? Perfect, thank you very much, and that'll go on the FAQs as well? Thank you. In that kind of same vein, on the school closure, school closures or class closures, is that same process going to take place that we just discussed?
Yeah.
Okay, and that'll be on there as well? Sorry I'm taking so long, but I just want to make sure that the public understands each of these. And, and we're very clear, and we don't have to think about these things after the fact when we're already opened up in having in-person school. Then the self-quarantine room. I think we just need to make sure that we are giving support to school sites that have capacity issues. And I just know that all this distancing and all this quarantining, there's, you know, if you're already using your closets and storage rooms and teacher conference rooms for instruction, I, I wonder where we're gonna, are we gonna have a area of a hallway? Or I don't know what's gonna happen.
We did this last year, and we were able to work it out. We were very fortunate that we didn't have multiple cases in a day. And we also have misters at the school, which makes it so much easier to clean the area much quicker. So we're very fortunate with that. We don't have to wait the same wait time, because the misters take care of it pretty quick. So it's not like three or four classes that are tied up. You're waiting one, you know, a day for this one to be ready. We, the misters help with that, and we were able to expedite the cleaning process.
Thank you. And then I think this is a superintendent and/or Ms. Donaldson question. I just want to know if we are having discussions on the, the teachers, administrators, staff, who are having to quarantine, because we're telling them they have to. And then is there something that they can be doing to possibly, you know, coordinate other things for us during that time, that they can do from home? Some way to, we're, we're telling them they can't come. And then I'm concerned about those that can't, like if they've used up all their personal leave, I just worry about, have we thought through partial, you know, up to this many days with this certified doctor's letter? You know, or if, if we're saying you can't come to school, then are we giving them something they can do from home? Can they help with making sure that every student that is not in school is getting the, the homework and schoolwork? You know, is there something we can still use them to help us with?
So just like last year, we, we were very flexible and fluid. The, the biggest piece about sick leave is that employees receive a minimum of 10 days of sick leave each year annually, and that, those days actually add upon itself. Now, those are 100% paid sick days. But then we also provide, within our sick leave policy, 90 days of extended sick leave that is paid at 65% of their pay.
Yeah.
Now, when you think of a, a school year, it's 182 days. So we actually offer already, without the COVID leave, 90 days of extended sick leave for employees. Yes, sir.
And Ms. Donaldson, can you please explain to the board, are sick leave amounts as compared to other parishes across the state of Louisiana?
Yeah, so, so we, we're comparable with other school systems as far as we, we have a very generous sick leave policy for employees that, that they need, if they need the sick leave. And so that's why we're not instituting at this time the extension of COVID leave, because we do have that flexible of the 90 days that employees can utilize. We also have a sick leave bank that employees can utilize as well. So, but 90 days is a long period of time that a person can actually utilize it. And that's already built into the policy that you all approved in January. So we feel at this time that this is sufficient. As far as the teleworking for employees, certain positions, of course, cannot telework. And so we, we work with them on a case-by-case basis, working with the supervisor as well as the employee. And so there will be a form that they will be able to fill out if they're notified that they need to quarantine. Now, everyone, you know, we listened to Ms. Dupree's presentation, so we know that everyone doesn't have to quarantine based upon whether or not they are vaccinated or not. But we have some flexibilities within allowing employees certain, in certain positions to be able to telework. And they would complete an agreement, understanding that they would have to do, be able to do their job in that environment. And so we utilized that last year, and we'll be able to institute that again this year as well, at a limited basis. And we will make sure we review it, because we want to make sure that the person is actually able to work. And if they're not able to work, then they, again, can avail themselves of the district's sick leave.
So they have 10 paid sick days?
That's added each year.
And?
90 days of.
Plus, they have 10 personal days?
No, 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 so you have 10 sick, sick leave days that is accumulated each year. So if, if I've worked for five years and I've not taken a day, I've got 50 days at 100% of my pay of sick leave.
Okay.
And then, once I've exhausted the actual regular sick leave, I still have 90 days of extended sick leave at 65% of my pay, which is equivalent to what was offered in COVID leave, the 65% pay.
So are you saying we don't have any personal days, like?
Well, those are, those are considered, sick, sick days are, you know, they're, they're personal. And if it's an emergency.
And it's 10 days for anything? I'm going to a funeral, I'm going to a doctor's appointment, I'm sick, I'm going to Hawaii.
It's not for going to Hawaii, unless.
So we don't have personal days?
Well, so we have annual leave that is available to employees who are 12-month employees.
Okay.
But for our nine-month, nine, 10, and 11-month employees, they don't earn annual leave. So those, that, those annual leave days are kind of considered those days for that type of thing.
But the 10 days do accumulate?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and can we get all of this on the FAQs?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
On the website, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this question is for the superintendent and Ms. Williams. And it is, so we, we did handle and come up with a, a resolve to kind of how we're going to handle the magnet students and the, the hold seat letters. But what I'm wondering, are we going to be doing the same for the gifted students?
Dr. Williams, please come on.
Students with disabilities and gifted and talented students will be served at the EBR Virtual Academy just as they are in a regular school. So if the parent and the family decides that they'd like to enroll their student in the EBR Virtual Academy, they'll receive their gifted and talented services just as they would in a regular school.
But, but what I'm wondering is, on the gifted, is there a hold seat at their school where they are?
So students with disabilities and gifted and talented students, their services are not a place, it's a service. So it doesn't matter whether or not they're in a virtual learning environment or in a regular school. They receive their services wherever they are.
So they decide that they're ready to come back in person?
Yes.
Is that seat going to be open for them at their school where they were?
They always have a seat, they always have their services. So the services follow children with disabilities and gifted and talented students. Wherever they are, their services come to them.
So they'll have these, they, you're saying that they're not going to have a hold seat letter?
They don't need one.
Okay.
Because.
So you're saying that it will be held for them at that neighborhood school or wherever it is that they are used to going in person to?
Yes.
Once they decide to come back?
Yes, just a special education is not a place, it's a service.
Yeah.
That service follows that child, no matter the learning environment that they're in.
And they can come back to the in-person at that same site?
Absolutely, they're always entitled to their services wherever they are.
But we're not going to say, well, you don't, we don't have that seat there at that site, now you go to this site?
They're, they're not, it's very different from a magnet program. So their services are their services wherever they are. So if they un-enroll in their school, enroll in the Virtual Academy and go back, their services follow them. There's not a seat assigned for that student, because they have the exceptionality of being a student with a disability or a gifted and talented student.
So, but another student couldn't get tested and come into that seat at that school?
We serve each child according to their need. So no, there's not a seat limit number for a gifted and talented student or a student with a disability.
So what I do know that, you know, in, in a gifted first-grade classroom, there's this many seats. And I know that gifted evaluations go on throughout the year. And so.
We are required to provide the services.
But we're required to offer them somewhere.
Yes.
But we're not required to offer them at school A where they were before?
We will ensure that students have their services provided to them at their enrolled school.
Back to their school, okay. All right, good deal, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And then I also had a question about, on the timeline, and it was, so, on the timeline sheets, it, it talked about, I don't remember what slide that was on, but, so that there were entry points back in. And what I'm just questioning is, so, what if this magnet or gifted or ESS, whatever they are, that's making them exceptional? If they stay virtual all of this school year, what happens to their seat? Are they guaranteed it back next year? Because we didn't cover that, we covered, like, if they come back in January?
Yes, if they're enrolled in the Virtual Academy for this entire school year, their seat will be held.
Okay, so they'll come back to whatever, sixth, fifth grade, back at their homeschool in their magnet program, or their dedicated magnet, or their gifted classes back where they were the year before, if they'd have gone in person? Okay, all right, good. Can we get all of that on the FAQs? Because I'm getting a lot of questions on that. And particularly, all of those, magnet, gifted, exceptional, all of that. And then I think the only other thing I, I wanted to make sure we're doing is the hotline. I'm really glad we're going to get that staggered, longer, extended hours. And I just wanted to remind us that every single year, we need the transportation hotline. And just to make sure that it's being manned and being manned with extended hours, especially in the beginning of the year, especially with all these bus protocols and all of that. Just make sure we're, we've got some stellar customer service in, in the transportation hotline as well. Thank y'all for putting up with all of my questions.
Thank you, Board Member Baloo.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We are on D1 now, right? I just want to make sure, we're not still on C1?
We haven't moved forward yet, we, we are still on C1.
Okay, that's one. Well, just one question in regards to the, the mask requirements. Is there an anticipation that that would go away if the state no longer mandates the mask?
At this time, we know that the governor has made his requirements of September. We are, well, we've said that we would look at our current numbers and work with our Health Advisory Committee, which includes physicians, the Health Department, to make a determination.
All right, well, thank you.
And Board Member myself, okay. Look, I forgot about on the Virtual Academy, Ms. Williams, the flexible scheduling on the, on the presentation. Can you clarify what that means for me?
So just as we provide flexible scheduling within our schools, within the virtual day, we understand that there are limitations on students' ability to attend to their virtual instruction. So that's what that's referring to. It's just the flexibility of the teacher and the student to be able to be engaged in learning during that day.
So if you don't mind, give me a, because my grand, my grandson's mother actually decided to put him in the virtual. So what would that look like for, for him in kindergarten?
Oh, kindergarten.
Oh, I mean, I don't want, just, you know, what would it look like, yeah?
So let's think about the, the way a five- or six-year-old attends in school. They need frequent breaks. There is a certain time limit that we can hold a five- or six-year-old's attention. That would include some asynchronous time, where they are able to practice skills away from the screen. So it's building in those kinds of flexibilities to ensure that we can engage a, a student for a full day of learning.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, because I wouldn't show if there was like flexible day, you know, start at eight versus start at 10, or end, end your day at five, or, or. But you gave me some clarification, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then with that COVID sick leave versus the extended sick leave, can I get, I thought I recalled, and I was not able to dig through my materials before now, I thought I saw in the, in the ESAR and the whatever other acronym, the federal dollars that came down in response to COVID, that use, that, that they provided for COVID-specific sick leave to, to, to help districts manage extended leave that might be due. And I get that the district has a very generous, in comparison to others, extended sick leave, but the truth, the truth is, 65% of somebody's pay is still just 65% of somebody's pay. And my concern is, folks coming to work, still having cleared the virus as they need. And my concern is, folks coming to work, still having cleared the virus as they need to and, but they can't afford to lose forty-five percent of their pay. Um, can I, I need some, I need, I need clarity, um, on whether I remember correctly of whether or not the federal monies that came down, one of the stated purposes included COVID leave.
Uh, Vice President Collins, are you asking the question, just wanna make sure we're clear. You're asking the question is if we can use the ESAR dollars for sick leave, is that correct?
Well, and, and COVID leave in particular, not just giving somebody sixty-five percent of, because we know that this is gonna create, this pandemic has caused high occurrence of sick, of, of long leave. Uh, and, and, and so, you know, there's not just a, a bad cold or you broke your foot and you need to wait till you get your cast, so that's three, four days maybe. Like, I mean, is, we have increased instances of longer than usual leave as it relates to the virus. And so then, yes, um, to answer your question, does the ESAR money and whatever other acronym they sent down allow for that?
No ma'am, not for sick leave. It allows like, for example, if employees have worked in a capacity other than what they normal work, then it, it'll offer them a stipend for that, but not for sick leave.
Okay, okay, okay. So then, and you may, you may not be the person to answer this, but when we did the COVID leave the previous school year, where did the funding from that come from?
Can Ms. Donaldson?
Ms. Donaldson can answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Questions, where, where did the COVID leave come from last year?
The funding for it, yes ma'am.
So, the initial extended FMLA and the initial COVID leave that came down as a mandate in March of 2020 through December 31st of 2020, was, um, it came out of general fund.
Okay.
Uh, it was not refunded.
Okay.
Um, for, for that, but it did come out of general fund.
Okay.
The emergency, uh, the emergency COVID leave that you all approved in January of 2021, uh, through March 31st of 2021, that also came out of general fund.
I was taking notes. I got the part with the FMLA and the COVID, March, December 2020, but then you told me the second one?
Yes ma'am, so if you remember, there was a federal mandate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was the first one that, uh, we had to, that we instituted, uh, that started, uh, effective March 2020 through December 31st, 2020. Um, and then once that federal mandate, uh, ended, uh, the district decided to extend the, uh, and create a, a new, uh, extended FMLA, well, in, a new COVID leave, emergency COVID leave policy that you all approved, and that covered January 1, 2021 through March 31st, 2021.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
My, thank you very much, thank you for clarifying the funding source of the previous. Um, I, Superintendent, I really, I really do feel strongly because, uh, and, 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 and because we, we have had, we have good policy to, to mitigate abuse of the leave, um, can, I would really like to explore ways to, uh, provide for that, um, to provide for COVID leave and we can explore, uh, possible funding sources and ways in which to continue to by policy mitigate any abuse of the leave. I just, it, we just know, we already know from this pandemic, uh, in previous, the, the previous experience with the pandemic, excuse me. Uh, and then this is a whole nother animal with this variant. And then there's another variant that folks are already concerned about, that we need that flexibility for our educators, uh, so that they won't, um, you know, folks like to talk about economy, um, and that's why we don't wanna shut the schools down. Uh, well, you know, our teachers with their salaries do contribute to economy. Uh, and, and more importantly, they need to be able to take care of their basic needs. And a forty-five percent cut on something that they don't have control over is, uh, is something hard to bear. So I would like to, uh, for us to be able to visit that later and give you some time to look at some, some options possibly.
We can explore that, Vice President Collins.
Thank you. Board Member Howard.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Um, I just wanted to make a comment about, I think the COVID hotline is a, um, a good feature to have as we navigate these, this very fluid situation. But I think it's an unrealistic, unrealistic approach to only have it manned by two people for the amount of volume of calls that I believe to be true will be coming to that hotline. So if there's a, any way, um, staffing-wise or, I don't know what you have to do, but two people is a very unrealistic, um, goal when you have over forty thousand kids that will be experiencing this and trying to navigate coming back to school full-time. So I just would ask for us to reconsider how we man that particular hotline.
Thank you, Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, Mr. Howard asked one of the questions that, that I was gonna ask. I too believe we might be bombarded with only, um, a couple of people on hand. Um, but I just wanted to make clear, um, the circumstances around, uh, magnet students. Um, just wanna make sure that if a magnet student starts in the school and for whatever reason, because of quarantine or illness that they have to leave, um, they will be able to come back into this, into that school and not have to wait until the end of the semester or the beginning of the new semester. Is that right, just like any other student in the traditional schools?
Yeah, is, if a magnet student gets COVID leave, if they get COVID, if.
Yes, if they start at their school and have to.
If the student has COVID and they're at their school, uh, they would just stay at their school if they are quarantined for X amount of days. If the parent decides that they want to be virtual, then that's when they would leave their school and go into a virtual school.
Mm-hmm.
And we would give them a letter to make sure that we hold their spot. So whenever they're ready to go back to their, to their magnet, uh, spot, they will have that. So they will not lose their spot magnet.
So they have the option to come back to their magnet school unless they're enrolled in the virtual school for them, for that, for the rest of the semester?
So say that one more time?
They have the option to come back to their home school unless they enroll in the ma, in the virtual, uh, school.
Yeah.
If they enroll in the virtual, then they'll need to, to, um, finish out that semester in virtual and then come back in January.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
One more quick question, as she was asking questions. Clarity, please. I thought I recalled during the presentation that if a student is sick, they would go home, uh, with COVID, they would stay home as with any other illness. They wouldn't have to drop or they wouldn't go to the virtual school setting, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, yes, if a student is sick, uh, is sick, they stay in their school. If the family decides that they want them to have a virtual experience, then they would have to enroll into the virtual school.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then, just one more, along the same vein, if a student is, you, and y'all said this, but I just wanna make sure I'm clear. Um, if the child is a contact, they go to the quarantine room. They don't necessarily have to go, stay home, but they go to the quarant, or the isolation room cause I make some, they go to a separate room?
If they, if they receive, if they are, um, if they are, if we've noticed that they have COVID right there on the spot, is that correct? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I'm trying to stay real.
Yes, uh-huh.
Yes, so, I mean, Stacy, I wanna make sure I.
Thank you.
So if a student has COVID, they go to the isolation room until their parent picks them up. If a student is a close contact, they go to the self-quarantine room until their parent picks them up.
Okay.
It's not a room where they come to receive services because they could develop COVID.
Okay.
So they go home, just like any other child
Okay.
who's sick and treated the same way with getting homework, et cetera.
Okay, and so just the reason for the separation is, you know for sure one is got it and you don't want the other one who may get it or develop it to be in there with the other baby that does.
Correct.
All right, okay, thank you very much. And that is all. Um, moving forward with item D1 grant. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following grants. A, Neighbor's Project Grant for Public Schools in the amount of $2,478.96 for the DuFROX School for Robots in the Classroom. Um, and then B, Kelly Jean Cook Charitable Foundation, Deborah Rochelle Teacher Grant in the amount of $15,904 to provide funding to four teachers for classroom projects. Can I get a motion? Board Member Goode, can I get a second? Board Member Ware Jackson. Seeing no comment from the board. Any public comment? Seeing no, oh. Okay, uh, while we waiting on public comment, uh, Board Member Baloo?
I just wanna make, since we're, um, considering this item to, for, to allow for discussion, um, I would suggest a friendly amendment that we just advance the item, uh, with no recommendation, uh, to the full board meeting. Cause there's, there's a lot of things that you've asked for, uh, information later on.
Okay, so if you could clarify, uh, now, is this in reference to the grants in item D1 or is this in reference to all of the?
No, 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 this is, I'm sorry, are we?
We are actually finally at item D1.
What, what number is?
Oh, at the end.
I'm sorry, never mind.
No worries. Okay. All right, public comment.
Greetings. Um, I had somebody that wanted to let y'all know he was in the building. Um, I just had a question in regards to the same question that Mr. Blues, uh, that Mr. Blue had. And I just wanted the board to actually take into consideration.
Okay.
And that is, um, I know that we're supposed to speak at the very end about the COVID protocols, but were we gonna have public comment in regards to the actual presentations that were done, which was the, uh, item before this one?
Okay.
Or were we gonna do all of that?
So let me pause you, cause that's not germane to this particular item. When we finish with this, I'll let the, uh, council give some clarification to others who might also have that question after we get past this item.
That was the only thing I had to ask.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Uh, after we get past D1, we'll take a moment before we go to D2. All right. So no public comment on D1, coming back to the board. Seeing no board comment on item D1. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Okay, and, uh, General Counsel, if you could just clarify for m- my colleagues and the public, how the last item, uh, that was added to the agenda will be handled?
Well, I think the question was why was there no comment allowed on the superintendent's presentation? So I'll, I'll address that question. Uh, there was no board action, no action taken by the board and by law, no public comment needed for those types of items. And so, it was a presentation by the, by the superintendent, uh, with no action needed.
Okay. And then, can you repeat the motion? Can you, for clarity, repeat the motion that was passed so that people understand the, uh, the actual agenda item?
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna, the motion, the motion by Mr. Lannister was to add an item to the agenda that would allow for discussion of COVID-19 issues and school reopening. That will involve public comment, that was the purpose of him moving to add that item.
Okay, and so that's related to COVID-19? And to have, and to clarify for those in the public with a similar question as Ms. Corley, that would by the nature of it include any other concerns after the superintendent's presentation?
Yes ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. Moving forward with item D2, Professional Services Contract. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the following. A, City Year in the amount of $121,600 to provide evidence-based interventions, funding source, direct student services. B, City Year in the amount of $358,400 to provide instructional and behavioral student support, funding source, direct student services. Studyville in the amount of $36,000 to provide tutoring for students at Glasgow Middle, Park Forest Middle, McKinley High and Bel Air High Schools, funding source, direct student services. Deaf Resources Center of Greater Baton Rouge LLC in the amount of $80,000 to provide sign language interpretation services to students with disabilities, hearing impaired, funding source IDEA Part B. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Okay, Baloo and Howard. Seeing no requests to speak, any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, back to the board? Oh, okay, all right.
Ms. Collins, was the maker, Mr. Blue? Thank you.
I am all in agreement for the, um, the actual contract for the sign language interpreters. If we're gonna give sign language interpreters for more than once a month. Children that need sign language interpreters, need sign language interpreters Monday through Friday. It's not fair to children like mine whose first language is ASL and they only get an interpreter one time a month. What are they supposed to do the other twenty-eight to thirty days a month? They're not getting language. They're not getting taught in their primary language. That's a major problem. It's also discrimination. Cause we teach all the rest of the children in English and I know that we do at Bel Air High, we make sure that children are taught in their native language. Why can't we provide ASL interpreters every day? I think that our contracts should make sure that we allow our children to get ASL every day, Monday through Friday, as well as by law. These children can take ASL in, as a substitute for a foreign language and actually sit for certification and become interpreters before they graduate from high school. We really need to make sure that we do that. Also, City Year. I see a lot of stuff dealing with money for City Year, but I don't see how they're, how they're actually helping our children with disabilities. It's not right and it's not fair that we continue to focus on certain schools. We leave out others and we focus on certain students and we always leave out our children with disabilities. As I've stated multiple times, our children with disabilities is the most federally protected group of students and they receive the least. I know American Rescue Plan disseminated more than a billion dollars, more than a billion. We have to make sure children with disabilities are at the forefront. It is a shame that our school system has more than 4,000 kids with IEPs and they're not receiving proper and adequate services. So I just ensure and I ask that as we continue to present with grants, that we look for grants that actually address every child, each child. That's our new motto, each child in each classroom, every single day of the week. Make sure our contracts reflect that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, back to the board. I do want to make sure I get some clarity around, uh, some of what Ms. Corley said. I'm looking at the contract and it looks, it does look like an as needed. Is this as needed in addition to if a child is deaf and has an IEP and needs an interpreter every day? What's the nature of this contract? I mean, does, if a child is deaf and they need an interpreter every day, we are, I mean, help me understand. Do we already accommodate that and then we have moments that require a call for as needed like orientation? We know we have some deaf families in the, uh, school orientation and you want to make sure you have an interpreter?
Dr. Robinson, uh, Chief Acting Officer, can you please come on?
Thank you.
So as it relates to, um, students with disabilities that need, uh, sign language, based upon how that IEP is written, that dictates the type of service, the frequency of the service, how that's going to be designed for that particular student. When it comes to large gatherings, like back to school nights and those types of things, uh, that's an as needed. And but now if it's written into the IEP, then it's provided.
Okay, all right, thank you for that, uh, clarification. Okay, Board Member Lannis. Okay, no problem. Seeing no other requests to speak by the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Okay, moving forward with item D3, Professional Services Contracts. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the following. A Instructure, also known as Canvas, which is how I recognize it, in the amount of $167,750 to provide an online learning management system to access content material, customized online professional development and additional materials. Funding source ESER III, Action II. B Manners of the Heart in the amount of $70,217.97 to provide a social emotional support program based on core values. Funding source ESER III, Action II. And then C NearPod in the amount of $177,89.99 for an interactive K-12 digital platform for lessons, videos, activities and formative assessments. Form, funding source ESER III, Action II. Can I get a motion? All right, Board President Tatman and Board Member Ware Jackson. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, any public comment?
Yes, Board, first and foremost, um, ESER funding. Do we even know how much ESER funding we still have left? I, uh, my memory served me correct. We, we, uh, approved several grants, several things, uh, over the past few months that has come directly from ESER funding. So I'm not sure if we even have enough ESER funding to cover anything.
Ms. Corley, if we could keep it germane to the contract.
Yes ma'am. As it relates to contracts, a lot of these contracts are not servicing our children with disabilities. We're still getting in contracts that are not gonna serve each and every child in each and every classroom. That's our new motto, each and every classroom, each and every child. These, these grants are not servicing them and we have approved over a million dollars worth of grants. And they not approve, and they're not servicing each and every child. I can't tell a child at Northeast Elementary or at Woodland Ele, uh, Woodland High that has a disability that they're gonna, that they're gonna actually be serviced with these grants. And that's shameful, that's hurtful. And it's painful as a parent that I have to keep coming up here and stating that. I would greatly appreciate if we can make sure that if we approve all these grants, that these grants will service each and every child. Each and every child. And I'm asking you, please make sure that if this grant, if you know this grant cannot service each and every child, which some of them won't, don't approve it. Do like y'all did during the last board meeting and separate them, break it up. And actually approve the ones that will and don't approve the ones that won't. Cause each and every child matters. That's why I love the motto, one team, one mission. Cause we were supposed to be one. And a, as a body of one, that mean if one part ain't right, the rest perish. So I think we need to take that back into consideration. And as a side note, American Sign Language Interpreters is an ADA requirement and right now our board me, meeting is an ADA violation. We are supposed to have ASL interpreters as well as bilingual interpreters for every meeting. That's under American Disabilities Act. And I just wanted to make sure that they, that all the top cabinet know it. That when they say that is as needed, it's needed right now under American Disabilities Act. So I think we need to make sure that we're germane about that.
Thank you. It, seeing no other public comment, back to the board, seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward to item D4, Contract Renewal, City of Baton Rouge. What did I do? I skipped something? Oh. Board Member Dyson.
Just, um, wanted to give a special shout out to, um, Jill Rigsby, who's been here for this meeting with Manners of the Heart. And I am just thrilled as can be to have you in our schools. Um, the program materials that you use and the, um, respect that is taught and manners and respect, uh, to our children is just invaluable. And I just wanted to thank you for being here tonight.
All right, now moving forward with item D4, Contract Renewal. City of Baton Rouge Adult Education EBR Prison. Consideration of a request for the approval to renew a contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the City of Baton Rouge not to exceed $134,110 to allow the EBR Parish School System Department of Adult and Continuing Education to continue providing adult education classes and heiset testing for inmates at the East Baton Rouge Parish Prison from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Funding source, City of Baton Rouge Grant. Moved by Board Member Dyson, seconded by Board Member Lannis. Board Member Lannis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First, I just want to say, uh, this is definitely a necessary grant and I'm happy that we are renewing it. Uh, my only question is, is how many, uh, inmates can we actually service with the amount of money that we are putting into the, uh, that we're actually getting for this particular grant?
Dr. Williams?
I will need to do research on that question. I'm not exactly sure of the number of units that we can offer based on this amount of money. I'm sorry. This, good, I have backup tonight.
Good afternoon. Um, we generally serve approximately 175 students a year at the prison with those funds.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My question is basically around the dates that are in the, the contract. January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. And we're receiving this in July, so, in August. So I'm, I'm wondering, uh, how does that work? I mean, why are we getting this now and are we doing back pay or?
So, uh, City Parish actually drafts this contract for us. Um, and unfortunately, services have been suspended, um, at the prison due to COVID. So they chose to still, as a renewal, use the official dates.
So to answer your question, Ms. Ware Jackson, we want, we're obligated to go back, but they insisted on putting the dates in because, uh, you know, normally that's the date of service. But we won't be, we won't be invoiced anything after today's date, before today's date.
So they still wanted to, um, present the contract as a renewal? And the contract generally goes for the last 25 years from January to December.
Okay, so basically we're looking at the next six months instead of for a full year?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And Ms. Ware Jackson, it actually comes annually every year at the same time, just for your information.
It usually comes in the mid-year, but it's not usually for the past six months, right?
No, and I'm, and I'll let, um, our director talk about why that's the case. But I do know, cause we had a conversation about this, about the dates, that she can provide further clarity.
So we usually present the contract in late fall unless City Parish is late getting us the contract, um, to present to the board. So it's not usually at this time of year. It's usually in November or December at the latest, typically January.
For the next year. Right?
So sometimes it comes in January for the current year.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, just a little late this year, okay, thank you.
Board Member Dyson.
I would like to request that the, um, that we make sure we coordinate with the City Parish that, you know, we need to do this, not retroactively for this coming. Like, uh, January's too late, really. They need to get it to us in the fall for the coming. And we just need to set that as a protocol expectation. Because we're a board that shouldn't be doing things retroactively, but coming forward. Uh, with that said, um, I was just wanting to give a shout out as, um, as a, uh, participant in a leadership class, I was, I had the opportunity to go see this, um, education component at the prison and was just really pleased to see that we were able to offer these inmates productive time spent and understanding that with these, the high school diploma, or the high school equivalency, that we can help provide them with a more productive life once they, um, become, you know, out of the prison environment. And so I just wanted to say I fully support this program and the constructive use of their time while they're in prison. So thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Goday.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Collins. I just wanted to remind my fellow colleagues that I think the City Parish operates on a January to December budget and we operate on a July 1 to June budget. So there will always be a mismatch because their grant has to be put into their budget. And so we're, we're never gonna match up. They're gonna be giving us something in January for us to go through. So just, just a point, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from, uh, requests to speak from the board. Did, did we already do public comment on this particular one? All right, any public comment?
Hello again, Jennifer Harding, District 5. Um, I think it's really, really awesome and fantastic to provide, uh, programming in, in the jail. It's super important for people to have access to these sorts of things. But I do want to point out that Baton Rouge has the most deadly jail in the country. It is filled with deplorable conditions. We just had another death last week in the jail. And so I would hope that our institutions, as we are talking about making lives better for everyone, would also be holding these systems accountable, um, and not really participating, without actually speaking out about the deadly and deplorable conditions that are in this facility. So Ms. Dyson, if you went there, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Um, so I'm just, I just felt like I had to get up here and say that, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, back to the board, seeing no further requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Moving forward with item D5, Memorandum of Understand, Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Dual Enrollment. Consideration of a request for the approval of Memorandum of Understanding between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the University of Louisiana Monroe to provide dual enrollment courses for the 2021-22 school year. Funding source, SCA. Can I get a motion? Board Member Howard and Board Member Lannis. Seeing no requests to speak, any public comment? Seeing, uh, seeing no public comment, back to the board, Board Member Dyson.
I was just, um, curious how this, um, came about. I'm real, real, um, pleased to see this additional, uh, dual enrollment opportunity. But I was just wondering, um, why is it just at one school? Is it, I don't know if it was a certain, uh, content area that only they need it for?
Dr. Robinson?
Um, due to credentialing. And that's an issue as we are working even on the Glen Oaks, uh, project. As we move to next year with, um, the Cradle to Career project that, uh, we're doing, our teachers are not always certified. And in order for you to teach dual enrollment courses, you have to be credentialed and many of our teachers are not. And so this was an opportunity for Liberty to, um, receive. The teachers there are actually teaching these courses, um, to the students. So LSU does do some of that, um, yes, they do. Um, but the type of courses sometimes are not offered at the same time. Or it may not be the course that the, that is needed. So this was just another opportunity. Southern does the same thing. BRCC. BRCC does the same thing. But it's all about timing and courses and credentialing.
So are our other high schools not having that similar problem?
It, again, it depends on the types of courses that those high schools are seeking.
Right.
And I can tell you that we are going to be kind of really revamping as we move into the next phase of our cradle-to-career project. And we're going to see more of us having to seek outside of the Baton Rouge area, perhaps universities, because it depends on courses. And so, in order for us to do just what we're doing at Glen Oaks with BRCC, we were able to get teachers through them, as well as the ones that we had. But many of our teachers are not credentialed in order to carry the load. So, this was just another opportunity for those students at Liberty to be able to get the courses that they needed.
So, I'm a big proponent of dual enrollment. My children both went through high school with dual enrollment and were able to go to two different universities with those credits. And that it proved very valuable. And so, I know that with our cradle-to-career, we're trying to ramp up and get all of our high schools able to provide multiple options for dual enrollment. And, and I'm just hoping that we're looking at each high school and making sure that each and every high school has the support that they need to bring and grow the dual enrollment opportunities.
Yes, it will. We're definitely going to be making sure that there's equity across the entire system.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Board member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm very pleased to see University of Louisiana at the Monroe campus added to the, the basket of all the wonderful things that we have here in the district. Would somebody clarify for me the acronym for the funding source, SCA? For some reason, I can't remember. What is, what is that one?
That's supplemental course allocation. That funding source allows for us to, and it's used for dual enrollment purposes, so that we can pay for those courses for the students.
Supplemental course allocation. So, is that a part of, a bigger pot of, what's, where does that come from? I'm sorry to be asking a question.
Money that's funnel through the state.
It's coming from the?
That's funnel through the state to us.
Okay. All right, I had never seen that one before.
That's how we, well, that's how we pay for all of our dual enrollment.
Okay. Thank you.
Courses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other requests to speak from the board. Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary, please call a vote.
The motion carries.
Moving forward with item D6, district mobile app, consideration of a request for the approval of a contract between East Baton Rouge Parish School System and School Info App in the amount of $120,102 to provide a district multi-site mobile application. Can I get a motion? Board member Lanis and seconded by board member Baloo. I would like to get more information about what, what that, what that app looks like. Just a basic.
Amy Jones.
Good evening. The mobile app is an effort to build out from our strategic plan on the cornerstone of customer service so that we can more equitably distribute our communications throughout the district to mirror our website, to offer more features on mass callouts, and also cover all of the schools in the district mobile app and bear that burden on the district rather than the schools.
Okay, so then, like Park Forest Elementary and Greenbrier have their own apps that they figured out on their own. This app here would give them their own ability within this
Correct.
global system.
That's correct. And if they, if they've purchased that app through the School Info App, which many of our schools have, we'll reimburse them for this year.
Okay, and they won't lose the, they won't have to start from scratch?
Correct. We'll grandfather in the content and make sure that it's all branded appropriately through the district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
If I could just add to that.
Okay, thank you.
The more important thing outside of the branding is also more information for families. We're working hard to make sure families are more connected to their schools. And so, there were some schools that had, some schools that did not. And an easy way, instead of going to the computer, is everyone has a phone. So our goal is for all of our families that support our 41,000 students to download the app. And then their messaging and news and everything will be going through the app if they want to know about schedules or instant messaging from the district or messaging from their actual schools. So we'll be working closely to provide that information, or even course scheduling, those things. There's a lot of features on there that we're going to have, which we will upgrade communications across our city.
Oh, that's really good.
And it is integrated with our student information system, so it will be a truly district-wide integration.
And that's probably also helpful to families with children at more than one school.
Absolutely.
Instead of having two, three different apps. Okay. Seeing no other requests to speak from the board.
Great evening. I really and truly love this idea about a, about a one-stop-shop app. And I am truly appreciative about it. One of the things that I ask is, first, are we going to make sure that this app is in ADA compliance? So like, what about the individuals that are deaf or hard of hearing? If we have an app, what about those that are visually impaired? Those that have TBI, CVI? That actually need the screen to actually be color-coded and not a lot of distractions in the background? They have an organization, a lighthouse, a lamp, that actually helps with making sure that your things are in ADA compliance. If they don't help, then look at the Governance Office of Disabilities Affairs to actually help us with making sure that this app is going to be ADA compliant, but also that is accessible for those that are English language learners. I do want to make sure that we actually pay, think about that we have a large population of people in our school system that are English language learners, that need stuff to be disseminated in their native language. So like, our student handbook, Student Rights and Responsibilities handbook, it's normally only provided in English. But can we make sure that it's provided in Arabic, Vietnamese, French, Spanish? Because we have a lot of English language families in our school system. So I'm just asking that we actually consider each and every person because we need all of us to survive in, in the event of an emergency. This app, I believe with my whole heart, would be something extremely great because I don't always receive stuff through the telephone call-out or through class dojo. So this is something that I've been extremely excited about, is us having a one-stop-shop thing that can disseminate information out on anything to everyone in our school system, including like our school board meetings. There's families now that don't know that the school board meeting is open to the, to the public and that you don't need an invitation to attend. So, I'm just asking that we think about each and every person, but I am definitely in support of something like that. I just want us to make sure that we take all of that into consideration and that we bring forth more information about it. And y'all don't normally hear me say it, but I would love to be at the table to help you with it. Thank you.
Again, I'm making this comment on behalf of one of our members, Storm Matthews. And she says, and I quote, "That I am very pleased with this recommendation that, granted, I made at the strategic planning meeting. And I am 100% approving that the purchase of this app to improve the customer service and the ability to push out information to the parents." Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, back to the board. Seeing no further requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to item D7 litigation, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel of East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the amount of, in the matter, excuse me, of Emanuel Akinoshu and Laporsia Williams Akinoshu individually and on behalf of their minor child, name redacted, versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Lorraine Singleton, Suite Number 673568, Section Division 4, 19th JDC of the Parish of East Baton Rouge. Can I get a motion? Board member Goday and board member Lanis. Seeing no requests to speak from the board. Seeing no public comment. Back to the board. Madam Secretary, please call a vote.
The motion carries.
All right. Now moving forward to...
This would be item D8. This is the item added by Ms. Lanis's motion. It is a discussion of COVID-19 issues and school reopening. There's no official board action, so no motion or second. I believe his intent was to allow for public comment. So, we will go straight into public comment, and when completed, the item will close.
Thank you kindly. Now accepting public comment, because we don't need to necess- because we, as a board, already. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jason Spencer. I have four children in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. I, I find myself very invested with having my children in since kindergarten. It was something that I prayed about, felt that was the right decision for my family, and am confident that that is the best path for my family. My comments are short, to the point, sweet. Really, it, it goes to the freedoms of my children to breathe freely in school. I feel like our freedoms are being eroded. And it shouldn't happen without robust debate and with representation and with hearing out all viewpoints. And that's probably one of the reasons why I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this board, to speak my piece, to do it in a calm way. But to state that, you know, in the discussion with my children, they went through this all last year. And they were extremely excited that that was not going to happen this year until this mandate was changed. And so, I would like to get on the record on behalf of my children just to state my opinions about it and ask for the consideration as quickly as possible for that ruling to be withdrawn, whether it be the governor says it, you know, in September or when he's saying this 30-day, or just for that to be considered as quickly as possible. And I appreciate your time.
Good afternoon or good evening. Frankie Robertson, via Manla Group. I stand here today on side of several advocacy organizations here to express our concerns about the school year. On Monday, Governor John Bill Edwards held a press conference, and the comments from public health officials were startling, to say the least. I have a few comments I'd like to share. Some instances are paraphrasing, not intending to misrepresent any statements that were made, but I think that they should be made today. I heard none of them on the press conference on Tuesday relative to the safety of our children. On Monday, Dr. Sandra Kimberly, System Medical Director for Quality at Auctioner Health, said, "90% of the people in Auctioner hospitals around the state are unvaccinated. Our hospitals are full, staff retired. We have beds, but no doctors or nurses to care for them." Dr. Katie O'Neil, Chief Medical Officer at Our Lady of the Lakes, said, "Two weeks ago, we stood here with 36 COVID patients, and today we have 155, which is our max since April 2020. We are the largest hospital in the state. We have almost 800 beds. We have 713 people admitted today. And no one diagnosed should take up one quarter of your hospital. It doesn't happen. It's not imaginable, except for now. And we can't tolerate it because it's putting an incredible pressure on the rest of our patients and hospital staff." She said, "We, we are no longer giving adequate care to patients. We don't think we're giving adequate care to anybody. That is stopped because these are the darkest days of the pandemic. We have 67 empty beds in our hospital because we can't find any staff. So many of our staff are out because of COVID." Michael Sutton, CEO of North Oaks Health System, said, "We have had a counselor coming in to help with the resiliency in our staff to talk about what they're seeing. And I got a text before coming in here saying that the counselor's team had COVID and couldn't come. We have had to decide who gets surgery and who doesn't. We had to explain to a gentleman that we couldn't fix his brain aneurysm tomorrow, like we had hoped because we didn't have a critical care bed to put him in when he came out of surgery." Governor John Bill Edwards said, "Our healthcare professionals are tired. And when you have a disease burden like they have, they are impacted too. This is bad. It's not bad anywhere else in the nation today. Understand that healthcare delivery systems are sized to fit the demand of a given-sized population. And if you have the most cases in the country for your population, you place more demands on healthcare delivery systems, which have an adverse impact on people's lives. What I want to know today is why is school starting in person next week? If our hospital professionals have said that they are at max capacity and we are convening thousands of students in a space that is not safe, what is the rush? Why are we doing this? I would like to know how many people were hired and how many additional staff members, an exact number, that were hired to carry out this plan that you detailed earlier? And I would also like to know, um, gosh, I have another question. I would also like to know what the Parents Advisory Committee recommended when consulted about whether or not schools should open in person next week, for the record?
Thank you for your comments.
Hello again, Jennifer Harding, District 5. I'm the mother of an 11-year-old who is not yet eligible to be vaccinated. I'm the daughter of a man who's waiting on a brain surgery right now but can't get it due to all the overcrowding in our hospitals. I'm the daughter of a polio survivor, so therefore I know- I'm the daughter of a polio survivor, so therefore I know the value of vaccines. I'm the daughter of a ninety-five-year-old woman who lives with those two people and I am charged with taking care of them. I went to extreme measures over the past year to do that. I was really, like everyone else, super excited about sending my kid to school in person for sixth grade this year. But unfortunately, the reality is that we're just not where we were a month ago. I want to stop and say that it is so incredibly frustrating that we had to fight tooth and nail to even be able to stand here and speak to you. And there are people who are watching at home. Now the item's up on the agenda and they're going to make some comments. But there are members of the public, there are parents that wanted to have their voice heard and didn't know. They weren't part of the text chains and the email conversations and the back-and-forth calls that I've been a part of over the last forty-eight hours with some of you on this board. And it's incredibly frustrating that you wouldn't even expect and be ready to have the compassion to open up a forum for parents who are terrified right now. We are absolutely terrified. And it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when the outbreaks are going to happen. Every single school district around this country that has started has experienced outbreaks because that is how the virus works, okay? So we cannot put our heads in the sand and pretend like that's not going to happen. On August third, this PowerPoint presentation, those three PowerPoint presentations could have been presented to the public. We are Thursday before the start of school. How will people get this information in time to make decisions about what is right for their family? I'm very excited to hear about universal testing. I would like to know the details of that program. I would like for that data to be publicly available to everyone, to be able to find easily on the website. I agree that the hotline with two people are going to be inundated in five minutes and they're going to go running for the hills and screaming, "I cannot, my heart goes out to them doing that work." But I do think we need to make a forum for parents to be able to engage. I would encourage you to send all the information that was presented tonight to the principals, to be passed out to students at the schools. I would encourage you to make a virtual town hall option sometime maybe before the start date of school so parents who could not have the privilege of being here tonight can maybe be able to... And you know, just three minutes, three minutes is the time that I'm having, listening to this thing beep when I'm supposed to make a decision about putting my kid in the most dangerous situation of his eleven years on this earth.
Thank you.
And it's just really, really frustrating and I'm just so tired of having to...
Thank you.
Good evening. Caitlin Joshua with the Power Coalition for Equity and Justice. Want to thank you, Mr. Lanis, for bringing forth the motion for us to be able to speak tonight. Just wanted to bring to you guys' attention something that's probably happening to y'all as well. We are being bombarded with emails, phone calls, texts from various parents across the parish that are asking us to get involved and advocate on their behalf or with them to, as it pertains to their safety and well-being of their children during this 2021, 2022 school year. I do appreciate the transparency of the PowerPoint. As Jen Harding mentioned, when you guys shared at the beginning of the meeting, it did provide a little bit of clarity, but I do feel if you guys can get that on the website, send it out to parents, it would make a world of a difference. Although we do want to make some space for like a town hall or some type of forum so that parents can ask questions in real time. We do need a few more clarity points or points of clarity, rather, on the COVID rules as it doesn't seem too feasible as we know the COVID cases are twice as much as it was a year ago. And of course, I know it was mentioned over the course of the meeting that we did not have multiple cases at the same time last year. We know that's coming day one. One of the questions that was often entered in my inbox this week was what happens to the teachers when the entire classroom's on quarantine? What if it's multiple teachers? What if it's the whole school, like Jen said, we're seeing across the country right now? Just a host of questions that we would like to have answered in real time. And I think that's everything that I wanted to lift up. Thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, y'all. I'm Angel Bradford and I'm speaking as Storm Matthews. For children that get sick or quarantined and sent home, we know they're going to suffer what's been termed learning loss. And we know that it's pretty inevitable that COVID is going to impact our kids in schools and so we need to preempt that and be prepared for that better than we are now. Learning loss is going to be more severe this year than last year. Last year, they could join online and follow along, though some did not. This year, none will. Some people quarantined as many as five times last year. That is ten weeks of school gone under these terms. We have no plan for this whatsoever and we're asking you to expeditiously figure out a new plan when it comes to isolation and quarantine rooms. Medical personnel that are necessary to monitor them will have to be there because teachers and staff will not be able to do so. It's not safe. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all can hear me?
Yes.
All right, hi. I'm Maria Harmon, constituent in District Six, one of the co-directors for Step Up Louisiana. We organize with parents across Baton Rouge. And just some concerns we just have along with others, but just wanted to highlight the sanitation protocols and procedures. We feel like more could be done. We're glad to hear about the top-tier products they plan on using, but where's the details around sanitizing buses? Also, we have a lot of charter schools operating here. They have their own self-appointed school boards, aside from y'all, that decide how they plan to spend money in operating with the COVID return. Where are the regulations there for them to make sure school bus transportation companies like A&amp;S Transportation are following guidelines and regulations, that they're following sanitation protocols as well? So there's like a bunch of concern and just a lot of answers that people need. Also sanitation within the school buildings. We hear about the daily cleaning, but is more being done aside from just wiping, you know, high contact surface areas? So just wanted to thank you, raise those points.
Thank you.
Okay. So I normally don't write stuff down, but these were the questions that I was writing as I was driving here. What are you putting in place for the individuals like my child that cannot wear a mask to prevent them from getting COVID-19? Who will administer the testing? Who will monitor the reporting? And who will monitor these so-called quarantine rooms? How quick will we as a school system receive that data? What's the monitoring process that we will have in place prior to children getting on the school buses? Because our bus drivers matter too. What are we proposing for asymptomatic individuals who may have COVID that can infect children like mine? Sanitation? What products are we using to ensure that individuals like my child who have severe allergies will not have an allergic reaction to that? As I think about my child that has a disability that I bring faithfully to every school board meeting, he does not wear a mask and that has been documented to the school board and to the school system. I share this information proudly because my child cannot get the vaccine because it's not approved yet for children under twelve. Even when it's approved for individuals under twelve, he still will not be able to get it because he used EpiPen, just like his mother. He has a grandfather and a grandmother that loves him dearly, that are senior citizens. We know plenty of people that have died from this virus. The very first person in Louisiana that caught it and died was a person with a developmental disability. The other individual that worked with the governor's office that died was an EBR alumni and a president of Louisiana Developmental Disabilities Council. It is very near and dear to my heart because that was a friend. That was somebody that I loved like a family member and that was somebody that I can relate to because she was just like my child. I cannot put him in harm's way, but he cannot receive a free, appropriate public education via virtual. He needs to be in the brick-and-mortar building. Many times, we put things together, but we don't take into consideration real evidence-based practices and data. I'm asking that we not only have the town hall to hear everyone's input, but when we have our task force meet, have individuals like me whose child cannot get serviced by a hospital in Louisiana if he was to be infected with COVID. Those are the individuals. When we make it safe for them, we make it safe for all. Each and every person matter. The Bible says we need all to survive and I'm asking you to think about him.
Thank you.
As all.
Thank you.
So I just want to be very clear that unfortunately, you know, while there are a lot of things that are done in good spirits, the reality is this, daily cleaning protocols, they're not necessarily going to work. COVID is not spread primarily through contact. It's mainly spread through air droplets. And so we have to ask ourselves some very important questions, making sure that we have HIPAA filters, infrared ventilation, but more than anything, what other backup plans are we going to have such as virtual options? Because as we've seen, COVID is ravaging not only through children, it's ravaging through all of the communities in the state. Regardless of whether you're vaccinated, this is a serious issue and pretending as if wiping down some buildings and spraying some bleach and some Clorox is going to fix it. That's not what's going to happen here. So just want to reiterate that point that daily cleaning protocols are not necessarily going to solve this issue, that COVID is spread mainly through droplets. And so bringing people into closed spaces, even if we're cleaning, is not going to adequately solve this crisis.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other public comment. We now move forward to item E one, Announcements of Meetings. Back-to-school bash to be held August seventh, two thousand twenty-one, from ten a.m. to four p.m. at the Raising Canes River Center. Some or all board members may attend. Regular meeting to be held on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at five p.m. here at the Professional Development Center. And then a board retreat will be held on August twentieth at nine a.m. at a location to be determined and all board members are expected to attend. Can I get in a... All right, Board Member Goday, we are now adjourned. Yeah.